This is a sound check for the Landmarks Preservation Commission's afternoon session July 27, 2021. This is a sound check for the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's July 27, 2021 public hearing.
All right, great, and welcome back to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing of July 27. We are going to resume with item number seven, and I'll turn it over to Corey to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Item number seven is LPC 21-07882. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 573, Lot 71, 53 West Ninth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. An Italian Anglo-Italianate-style house with English and Italianate-style elements built in 1854, and the application is to install shutters.
Yeah. My name is Marcus Zimki. I'm the architect representing the designer on this job. And yeah, today we're basically going to go over what we're proposing, which is to add shutters to this this sorry, Anglo-Italianate house. So the existing conditions are such that the the house as it stands has actually lost some of its detailing. And as you can see in the top right image, the tax map photo at the second, third, and fourth windows. And so currently both 53 and the adjacent property, which is built in the same style at the same time, do not any longer have those details. And so in an effort to sort of understand that this is part of the evolution of the city's fabric changing over time, we do feel like something is missing. We hadn't originally intended to really look at this project as a facade restoration. But what we did want to consider is that much like the Roosevelt House, you know, we see the opportunity to introduce shutters, which, as you know, in the West Village is a very common sort of element. Not typically always on brownstone by any means, but as the Anglo-Italianate style was rather short period in New York City, and obviously it's experienced an evolution in this property in particular. We see that this element could potentially be a reasonable addition, especially as they would be applied as proper operable shutters. So on the left is again the existing, and on the right is the proposed. Originally, we had darker, closer to black shutters, and then we went to community board. And after that conversation, it resulted in something that reflects a little bit more like the Roosevelt property, which is to have sort of kind of more of a brown shutter that sort of falls against the brownstone a little bit more. And there's a little bit less of a juxtaposition, but nonetheless still exists as kind of this added architectural element. So here are drawings showing the same, which is and then also to note that that the existing balcony net, that these shutters sort of fit within that, and they still sit flush against the facade with shutter dogs, the dog legs. So these are the kind of these are kind of the elements that we're looking at, which is for operability, and that they actually exist as proper functioning shutters that sit off the facade, nothing, you know, fakely applied or anything that doesn't look appropriate or, you know, not historically accurate by any stretch. So that is effectively what we are proposing.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one. Are you replicating the shutters of any particular period or particular the dark block at a certain time?
The shutters themselves are simply louvered. They're not necessarily they haven't been pulled necessarily from any particular period in time. They're more meant, I think, to pull from some of the shutters that we see around the West Village to try to emulate a bit of that same spirit, while kind of adding the next chapter to this house and trying to remain sort of relevant within that visual.
So they're not replication?
No, no, right. There was, there were no, there's no documentation of shutters on this building, so there's nothing to replicate from this building, but they looked at other shutters in the Greenwich Village Historic District.
Correct.
Help inform their design. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, so I guess my, my first question is, there's no physical evidence either on this building of pinholes or anything like that.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And my second question is, since we've been duly educated recently by one of our fellow commissioners particularly, but maybe some applicants as well, but I think, I think it was our fellow commissioner, the one that's closest to the screen, has told us that the parlor, the parlor level was often panel, and the upper levels were often louvered.
Okay.
I wonder if maybe the commissioner would want to opine on this when he speaks, but anyway.
It was a security issue typically. They had panels on the lower floor. Did you look for evidence of pencils in the, in the brick walls or screws where you would have had plates for pencils?
We did, and we don't see any that exist. We know that, we know that work has been done to the facade, so it's possible that they might have been patched up if there was any evidence of them prior. At this, at the stage of this sort of proposal, we're sort of suggesting that we see no evidence of that. So.
Further to Fred's comments, I know by the 1850s on the merchants' house, they had changed the lower shutters to blue. They started off as panel, and they changed to blue as things got safer, I guess.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we'll move to public testimony. Simeon Bankoff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Simeon Bankoff, Historic Justice Council. Ah, yes, the 1850s when the East Coast was safe. So while HDC appreciates the impulse to add shutters to the historic house, we urge the Landmarks Commission not to implement this proposal. Opinions differ on our committee on whether any shutters would have been historically installed on this building, but in its current form, they seem greatly out of place, especially within this historic room. Additionally, we propose shutters appear oversized and poorly cut, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? All right, we did receive a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommend approval of the shutters, provided that they're a lighter color, and I know this was a darker color originally, so you can respond to that. And that's all that we've received in addition to HDC's testimony. So would you like to respond to the comments?
I think, you know, the only comment we have with respect to any objection is that we understand and appreciate that, you know, what the Landmarks Preservation Commission tends to look at is the natural evolution of how the city changes, not only the original. And so we do feel that in some ways, we're very much trying to remain respectful of the architectural elements that exist in this neighborhood. And we're also trying to give a little bit of life back to this facade without demanding too much of a serious, you know, kind of reversal or return to the original. So, you know, I think in our eyes, this is a, this is a way to kind of add a bit of quality to the facade without, without necessarily going back to the original, but, but while trying to maintain a language that is consistent around the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions? All right, Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Hope Smith, would you second my motion?
Second.
On favor, same high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, I appreciate you're sort of talking about the evolution in the district. This is a district where we have a lot of transitional styles and things added to buildings later or removed to buildings as those styles became popular throughout the 19th and even into the early 20th century. So Commissioner, I think I will start with Commissioner Derek. Expert on shutters.
I shuddered. I, I, I think it's appropriate. I, there are two things that I'm sorry, be a nerd about this. The, the, the dogs that you are showing are an 18th century dog. By the, by the middle of the 19th century, they actually just had clips, really small clips, that you can still find at Restoration Hardware, by the way. So just consider that possibility. The other thing is, you seem to have an extraordinary number of louveres on these things. Again, I would suggest that you go to 19th century pattern books, of which there are many. And the fewer louveres you have, the less of a PIA this is going to be for the owner in the long run.
Understood.
Otherwise, thank you for, for restoring an element in this district that is appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I think it is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's appropriate, and I hope you can, if we approve it, that you can influence your neighbor to join you. It's always the help.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Probably.
Okay. Appropriate.
Yes.
One more thing?
Yeah.
These things are pieces of furniture that are sitting on the outside of the building. The, the framework that you have is really kind of weedy for this. The bottom, the bottom rail should be about three times that width. And, and you'll, you'll see, again, look at 19th century pattern books, you'll see the, the, the actual framing for these things is much beefier than this, because it's a, it's a problem. You're essentially hanging mortise and tenon furniture on the exterior of the building, and you want it to be as strong as possible.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, great. And Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with everything that Michael said, but I, for me, I'm, I think I'm going to vote against this one, because I think that the importance of this bill, this pair, is that they are seen as a single entity. And I think that Cornice shows that the, everything about it seems to want to be viewed as a, as a single thing. And I think that since there's no evidence that these shutters were part of that single thing, I, I could not support it. And I think it's an interesting issue, because, you know, clearly it's in the morphology of the village that this kind of thing would be done. But that's the difference between then and now. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we wouldn't approve that happened in the 30s and 20s. I, you know, I could see both sides of it, but I think I'm going to vote against.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I do think for, you know, for me, the fact that they've lost their lintels and sills, I mean, one could have had them when the other didn't. So it just turned out that they ended up both being shaved. So totally understand the desire to see them remaining. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion? There are a few patients that they work that on.
Okay. In the matter of 33 West Ninth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, an application to install shutters, I recommend approval, finding that the work will not alter or damage any significant architectural features. But the existing facade has been previously altered, including the removal of the stored bracketed lintels and window sills. Therefore, the proposed shutters will not detract from an intact, original composition or the remaining significant architectural features. That the proposed wood shutters will be in keeping with shutters found in other buildings of this type and age in the historic district in terms of material, design, placement, and finish. The work is reversible in nature and will not detract from the building or the streetscape. And the applicant will work with staff to review historically appropriate details, such as the shutter holdbacks and the framing and louveres of the shutters.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, do you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
No.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Horford Smith?
Aye.
With seven favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on the detail line that we've discussed today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is number eight, LPC 21-08999, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 698, Lot 10, 547 West 26th Street in the West Chelsea Historic District. This is a utilitarian garage designed by Charles H Caldwell and built in 1912 to 14. And the application is to install and alter canopies and install signage.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Julie Rosen from Higgins Place Bar and Partners. We are the Preservation for this very exciting new project at 547 West 26th Street. The building will become the home of Chelsea Factory, which is
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic just so we make sure we pick everything up?
I'm so sorry. I can start over. Um, the, the building at 547 West 26th Street will become the new home of Chelsea Factory, which is a new nonprofit performing and visual arts space as well as a community hub. And just to tell you a bit about Chelsea Factory, one of their primary goals is to help re-energize and re-engage the performing arts in New York City and incubate new talent. In addition, they will be partnering with community groups and local cultural institutions to develop programming. Chelsea Factory's board also includes someone from the Joyce Theatre on 8th Avenue, who will help to plan programming and assist with community coordination efforts. The scope of work before you today includes the installation of exterior signage and a new canopy at the street facade in preparation for Chelsea Factory's soft opening in mid-September and their brand opening in October. Does not seem to be advancing. 547 West 26th Street is located in the eastern portion of the West Chelsea Historic District on the north side of West 26th Street, just east of 11th Avenue. The circa 1912 building was originally built as a garage, but in more recent history, it's been utilized for a variety of purposes, including as a photography studio, a theater, and most recently as an event space. The one-story building is very long with over 140 feet of frontage, and it's also quite tall at 30 feet. On the left are photos of the existing conditions. On the upper photo, we have the west portion of the building. Below that, showing the east portion. The architecture is largely utilitarian, with subtle brick detailing at the arches and modern infill. There is a grandfathered canopy at the east entrance, shown in the right photo, and a small amount of grandfathered signage. There's signage on the canopy and menu boxes on either side of that east entrance. There's also existing uplighting at the sidewalk, which will remain. You may recall reviewing a proposal a couple of years ago for new entrance infill of this building that work is currently under construction, and it's shown in visuals later in the presentation. Chelsea Factory is envisioned as a multidisciplinary space, and so spatial flexibility and adaptability are key. So looking at the building and plan with the street facade at the bottom, the goal is for the interior of the building to be utilized as either one large space or divided into two separate performance or exhibition areas. And there is a retractable room divider, which will help facilitate those transitions. We are calling the west space A and the east space B. And since the flexible space will allow two events to happen concurrently, separate entries and separate signage are required. The proposal shown in this rendered view reflects the adaptability of uses within the space while reflecting the symmetry of that exterior architecture. And there are three components of the signage proposal before you today. The first is building name and identification. Dimensional letters will be utilized at the existing canopy to mark the east entrance. A new canopy will be installed to mark the west entrance. A new dimensional signage will be installed above the header courses of the large arches, accentuating the architecture. The building identification signage is essential for visitors to be able to find the building, whether that's from across the street on 26th Street, from one of the avenues, or even up on the high line. The second type of signage is wayfinding. Now, it's at both the sidewalk level and at the building scale. Space A and space B letters will be painted at the infill and at sidewalk level. Dimensional letters will be installed at the peaks. The wayfinding signage will help visitors identify which side of the building they should be entering. And it's important to have the signage at different heights on the building to allow visibility both on the same side of the street and from across the street. We're expecting that when people are queuing outside for performances, they're waiting for friends to arrive, or even when cars are parked on the street, that those lower letters may be lost in certain instances. And so the letters at the peaks will really help get visitors where they need to go. And the third and final type of signage is programming signage. That includes menu boxes at both entrances, as well as a poster sign at the center pier, used to identify current programming as well as future events. Each sign and signage type has its own purpose and function, and the variety of signage is really important on this very long building with multiple entries. In order to inform the proposed signage design, we looked back at the signage types historically on the building. As I mentioned, 547 West 26th Street was a purpose-built garage building, very much utilitarian in design and use, especially in comparison to some of the other industrial and warehouse buildings in the district. Its one-story massing stands in contrast to its very large dimensions. We found that historically, there's been a variety of signage on the building. For instance, in the 1915 photo at left, just taken only a few years after construction, there were a series of small projecting bracket signs and a painted wall sign at the center pier, and that serving as inspiration for the new poster sign. By 1940, as shown at the right, there was a larger projecting bracket sign and a large panel sign that actually covered up some of the arch. We also studied signage within the broader context of other garage buildings that historically existed in the area. The designated West Chelsea Historic District is outlined in red on this 1955 map with our site in purple. And as you can see, it's just one small piece of a much larger industrial corridor that once spanned the far west side from about 14th Street all the way up to 34th Street. The map shows the elevated rail line running west of 10th Avenue, as well as the freight lines coming into Manhattan across the Hudson River. There were garage buildings scattered throughout this industrial district, and many are labeled on this map. We focused our research on the low-rise garage buildings, and those are called out with blue dots. We're showing just a selection of those low-rise garage buildings on this slide. We actually have others in the appendix. But there were a wide variety of signage types utilized historically for these low-rise garage buildings. That included projecting bracket signs, panel signs, and painted signage. And very often, those signs referenced the architecture in their placement and scale. We also looked at the signage historically utilized in buildings within the designated historic district, which is defined by a diverse mix of commercial and industrial buildings. We found other examples of painted and panel signs. And we also came across the use of dimensional signage at terminal stores, seen at the upper left, which fired the curve of the arched opening. So with this historic context in mind, turning back quickly to the existing building condition, with a limited amount of grandfathered signage located entirely at that east entrance, the existing canopy will remain in place, and it'll be modified for the new use. The existing menu boxes will be removed and replaced with new boxes. The proposed design responds to historic signage types while meeting the needs of the new building program. The signage follows a symmetrical layout, very much concentrated at the middle of the buildings where the entries are. At the east entry, the existing canopy will remain in place. It will receive new letters and side panels. At the new west entry, a matching canopy will be installed. New LCD menu boxes showing current programming information will be installed, one at each entrance. And a poster sign at the center pier reminiscent of that historic signage found at the building will have visual information about the upcoming performances. At the large arch base, there will be dimensional building name signage along with a dimensional A or B wayfinding signage at the peak and a painted A or B at the storefront infill. Each sign has its own purpose and function and was designed to allow for visibility, as I mentioned, from both adjacent to the building as well as from up and down the street. We do have some details to share with you as well. The existing canopy design is contemporary in nature, and the new canopy structure and signage will largely match the existing in the materials, details, and dimensions. The new Chelsea Factory letters will range from six to eight inches in height, and a concealed strip light matching the existing will subtly illuminate side it. And here's an existing and proposed view of that east canopy. The existing canopy structure will remain in place, and new painted metal signage, similar inside space existing, will be installed. New metal side panels will be installed to conceal some visible structure and conduit that exists today. And that proposed view is also representative of what that new west canopy will look like. And a detailed view of the signage at the large arched base, all of which will be painted in metallic silver color. The painted A B wayfinding letters at the infill will be 24 inches tall. The dimensional signage at the top will all be one inch thick. The Chelsea Factory letters will be 13 inches tall, while the A B find, excuse me, letters will be 24 inches tall. I did want to note that when we presented this proposal to CB4's Chelsea Land Use Committee last month, we did receive some feedback expressing concern about the number of attachments on that the dimensional letters would be the effect that the, the attachments of the dimensional letters would have on the brick wall. And so in response, the team has developed a process to ensure that the signage will be installed at the mortar joints only, and that the historic brick will be protected. That process includes onsite surveying of the mortar joint patterns and custom manufacturing of the letters so that mounting pins are located with the mortar joint. And this full process is included on the upper right-hand corner of the slide. And this process has also been communicated to the community board. The new LCD menu boxes will have painted metal frames matching the existing gray color of the entrance doors and infill. The boxes will be slightly taller and wider, but a little bit shallower than the existing, and they'll be anchored to the building at the mortar joint. The menu boxes will be used to display current programming information, and they'll allow visitors to, excuse me, distinguish between programming in space A versus in space B. The menu boxes will show static images only with an anticipated change of one image per minute. The LCD screens will also have sensors on them to dim them in the evenings, and the plan is for the signs to turn off at the end of the evening. The poster box at that center pier will be eight feet square, and will have a metal frame painted the same gray color as the menu boxes. A small concealed strip light will illuminate the posters, and again, that will be utilized to announce the upcoming events. And we end with a rendering of how the building would look at Chelsea Factory's opening this fall. The signage types all serve different and very important functions, supporting building identification and wayfinding while working cohesively to meet the programming and visibility needs of this new performing and visual arts venue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Devonshire?
One of your existing photographs shows a banner hanging from the, from the wall. And in your image number four, it shows the standard sticking out from the wall. Is that a grandfathered sign that's likely to return at some point?
The banner poles are grandfathered. Um, the plan is to retain the potential use of the banner signs, but they would only be used for very isolated specific programming.
Okay, thanks.
Right, and hanging banners on them now is not part of this application, correct?
I'm sorry?
Is it not part of this application?
It's not part of this application. No, the poles are grandfathered. They're already there.
All right. Okay, other questions? Okay, let's see if we've got people signed up to speak. Simeon Bankoff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Simeon Bankoff, Historic Justice Council. HDC is pleased to see these buildings being put to active use. In 2005, during the West Chelsea Reserve Proposal, we specifically called out these simple buildings for preservation as they were underbuilt, even under the then-existing zoning, therefore risked demolition. It's rewarding to see that 16 years later, they still exist as reminders of the era's rich transportation history, and the proposal now that the Landmarks Commission is more for signage and not for ungainly dirt debt. That being said, we do find the proposed signage program to be somewhat excessive. In particular, the A and the B proposed to be located at the apex of the distinctive triangle of permanence are redundant, with the more sensible door signage are redundant with the more sensible door signage and visually distracting. Additionally, the eight-foot-by-eight-foot advertising sign marked as F on the plan is oversized and should be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Wolf?
I think that's about right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Pamela Wolf, speaking on behalf of Safe Chelsea, of which I am a board member. You might remember me. I stood here and sang Blue Skies to you back from the Chimpan Alley presentation. Safe Chelsea has serious concerns regarding the current signage proposal for 547 West 26th Street in the West Chelsea Historic District, specifically the cutout lettering proposed above the hallmark brick arches framing the building's two large window openings. This lettering would compete with and overshadow the subtle but powerful effect of these quietly monumental six-course roloch arches, detracting from the minimalist economy of means by which the building achieves such remarkable impact. We ask that the commission carefully compare photographs of the existing condition and object lesson in less is more with the proposals renderings, which show how strongly the new lettering above the arches and at the gable peaks would interfere with and diminish the facade's now strikingly successful composition. The applicant's argument that the signage is needed to let visitors know that they've arrived at their destination seems faulty. It would be too high above the sidewalk in front of the buildings to be noticed by those nearby, while banners on existing mountain poles perpendicular to the facade would far better announce the location up and down West 26th Street without further damaging the brickwork or distractingly aping its arches. We agree with Community Board Four's opposition to this upper signage on the grounds that its sturdy stud-mounted cutout letters would likely require drilling well more than 100 holes into the building's brick facade. This is not a reversible condition, given that these holes would remain when the signage is inevitably removed. When questioned about this in CB4's public hearing on the project, the applicant's architect responded that, quote, "every effort would be made," end quote, "to ensure that the holes for the letters mounting studs would drill into brick joints." That is not practical for prefabricated lettering mounted on an arched pattern over orthogonal brick jointing. Attempts to execute it would surely result in significant damage to bricks. Because the upper signage would both visually overwhelm and physically damage the building's facade, Safe Chelsea asked that the Landmarks Preservation Commission deny this part of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak on this application? Okay, and I'll just note, as has been stated, Community Board Four recommended, reviewed it, and issued a resolution recommending approval of the canopy, the new LCD signage, with the condition that the signage above the arched windows is eliminated, citing, as we've discussed, the concern that affixing the metal letters will cause permanent irreversible damage to historic bricks. Okay, would you like to respond to the testimony?
Thank you. In response to some of HCC's testimony, I would like to reiterate that all of the different signage components have been carefully considered, and each do serve a different purpose and a different way to make sure that visitors can get where they need to go. So the A or B signage at the infill and above is really meant to allow visitors adjacent to the building to find the correct side to enter on, and those approaching from a distance also seek to see the correct side. In this image, for instance, you know, we're expecting that visitors may be blocking some of that signage, especially during evening performances, and so having that upper signage really is essential. In terms of the poster sign, that has been carefully dimensioned to make sure that it fits within the brick pier. Again, that's based on historic painted signage. This view is a little oblique, but that pier is actually quite wide, and there's a lot of brick left on the perimeter between window openings and that poster sign. I also wanted to respond to some of Safe Chelsea's concerns. The building identification signage above the arches, the dimensional letters that spell out Chelsea Factory are really intended to respect and accentuate the architecture of the building. They're not in any way meant to cover anything up. They're being held back from those header bricks so that the architecture can remain exposed. I did also want to just state again for the record that we did hear Community Board Four's similar concerns about installations into the brick itself, and the team has revised the proposal to make sure that those dimensional letters will only be installed at the mortar joints, so that it is in fact a reversible installation. And the letters will be custom manufactured to make sure that anchor points align with the mortar joint. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, let's, Commissioner Brand, would you like a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Gustafson, would you second it?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start? So we've got the dimensional letters above the arch openings, the letters on the doors, one new canopy to match an existing canopy, letters on the canopies, and then the two LCD cases and the one poster case.
Yeah, I think this is a rational, logical because of the symmetry and the necessity for wayfinding. I don't have much of a problem with the proposal as is. I think the applicant stated the case. I have no problem with the canopy. I think the canopy can be duplicated. And I also, yeah, overall, I don't have as much problem.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brand?
I think I'm in agreement. I think the applicant just stated, and it will better to the testimony that the signage above the arches could be reversible, and they would mount the letters only in the mortar. I think that requires very careful coordination with staff, if that's accurate. You know, the rest of it I accept as an adaptive reuse of a building that was a different kind of a use, and if this, very appealing photographs that we're looking at. The city has a lot to be happy about, and I'm happy about it, and I think this is an appropriate approach. And I'm just thrilled to understand about this project, especially as we crawl out of our hiding places from COVID.
Yeah, I agree. Commissioner Jefferson?
Well, I approach this from the architecture. The contour edge of that building is very beautiful. It's special. And I think the arches are special. And I think that contour with arches, with enough on there, I think the lettering will take away from that. I think if they keep the bottom on the pedestrian level, it's enough to say, this is this. I feel. That gone to, because the contour is like.
All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, this is oddly, this is a tough one for me. The, you know, when I hear the argument that some of these signs might be hidden, and therefore you need to duplicate them here and there, and I'm thinking, you know, to hide those signs, the Chelsea Factory signs above the doorways, it'd have to be pretty doggone tall. The, so is necessary? Probably not. On the other hand, you know, we are, we do see these kinds of signs throughout the city above arched entries, and so they feel very comfortable. So it's hard for me to find them to be inappropriate. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go along with this one. I do hope that every time this commission is asked to tear down a garage building, that they'll have this image in their minds.
I know, this is one of your favorite building types. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think overall, it's a good approach. I think that the large A and B at the apex of the two sides is just, I think that's a little bit too much. I think just having the A and the B painted on the doors or on the storefront is adequate. And I think that this, the poster box, I, I would actually call for that to be, to be removed. I think that's, I think having the two menu boxes and the other signs that they have is sufficient, and I think that's, that sort of puts it over the top for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Very interesting array of opinions, and for me, what struck me the most is that this building is called utilitarian as its style. We should all be so utilitarian. I mean, it's a magical building that occupies a kind of a, it's like a surprise. You walk down that street and it kind of just appears this completely alien form. It's really wonderful. I think that I fall between several of the opinions on this one. I think that the A and the B are nuts and should be removed. I think that the Chelsea Factory signs, I'd be okay with them if they're painted. I think that the, the science, the analysis shown both of this building and of other similar buildings shows that while there may have been a few cases of surface-mounted lettering, the ponderance was either plaques or painted. And I think that the dimensionality of it, which is underplayed in this rendering, which is taken at night, would, I think it would be subtler and more in keeping with the building's history to have those signs painted. And I'm okay actually with the plaque in the center, which is badly shown on this rendering. The elevation is much more convincing to me. It's a square as opposed to a rectangle, and it does have more side brick proportion than, than it seems to show here. The canopies are fine for me. The LCD menu boxes are fine for me. Another interesting thing that they seem to be, you know, not utilizing is the blade signs. The blade signs has history on the building. There's the flags. The flagpole's already there. I think you could swap out the flagpoles or the banner, banner poles for a blade sign in a way that would achieve their signage goals without kind of overdoing it.
All right, Commissioner Devonshire?
I have no doubt but that the banners will return at some point. So there's a blade sign. I think the signage is excessive. I think the A and B can disappear from the, from the gable and peaks, and the lettering on the canopies can disappear, and the A and B can then land on the canopies, the smaller than there is now. I'm okay with, with another canopy, and I'm okay with all the other signage. I agree completely with Michael about the Chelsea Factory signs within the arches not being three-dimensional but being painted.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioners, for a lot of very thoughtful comments. And I think we have multiple suggestions. What we heard today from all of you, I think many of us are very supportive. I think of the adaptive use of this building and exciting to see this particular use here and see this building activated. But I think the general sort of theme, perhaps, even if it came out with different suggestions, is that the amount of signage is excessive and to re-study maybe the type, which ones and the type of, sort of the topology of the signs in relation to the historic characters, characteristics of the building and historic signage. So a little bit of open-ended guidance, but we don't have enough for a vote today. Yeah? I think we don't still have enough for the signage above the arches as presented today. Some people would approve them painted, others have not supported them at all. All right, all right. Given that there are still comments about other, the poster box and the signage on the canopy, I'm not sure that we'll get you there. But I think, all right, let's do a show of hands, Commissioners. If we were to eliminate the A and B in the, at the tops of the facades and do painted Chelsea Factory signs over the arch, would we have support for the application? So it would be to approve the canopies, the signage on the canopies, the poster box. The A and B goes away at the top, and the Chelsea Factory sign is, becomes painted. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, all right. So let's do an approval of modifications. Commissioner Chen, can you do that?
And I'll, I'll put together a modification while you're reading.
In the matter of LPC 21-08999, 547 West 26th Street, West Chelsea Historic District, the application is to install and alter canopies and install signage. Noting the building's styles, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West Chelsea Historic District, I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the rub will not damage or obscure any significant features that existing and proposed signage consisting of marquee signs, poster and menu boxes, and pinter signs will recall the variety of signage found historically at this building and buildings of this age and type, and will facilitate the adaptive reuse of this historic garage building, that the modification of the existing marquee will help conceal framing and wiring resulting in less clutter appearance, that the proposed marquee will be modest in size, will match the existing marquee at the building in terms of materials, details, and dimensions, and will reinforce the symmetry of the facade, and that the proposed LCD signage is modest in size and will feature rotating static images will be in keeping with the existing poster signage at the building and will signage typically found in his, here the buildings, that the proposed signage will be installed and mortar joints to the greatest extent feasible, that they pink, oh, that shouldn't be needed, right?
That still applies to the boxes.
Okay, okay. That the pinter signage at the modern doors will be modest in size and will facilitate wayfinding, and that the overall amount of signage will not be excessive or detract from the certificate architecture features of the building or streetscape. However, we find that the leather A and B at the top of the arch should be eliminated, and the, the Chelsea Factory sign should be printed instead of mounted.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Blen? Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're now going to move to item number nine, LPC 21-0-
21-05268. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1207, lot 29, 333 Central Park West in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a neo Renaissance style apartment building designed by Albert Joseph Botker, built 1909 to 1910, and the application is to install a rooftop pergola. Do you mind again the presentation?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, but just speak into the mic. It's like, it is hard to hear with masks on the air conditioners. And you can take the mic off if it's easier to hold it.
Let's see, I want to go through the notes, so.
Okay.
If that's better.
That's fine.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, my name is Adi Hocheck. I'm principal of AC Hocheck Architecture. The subject of my presentation, as you know, is a proposed rooftop terrace located at 333 Central Park West and 93rd Street. Plainseeg within the Central Park West Historic District. The roof terrace includes a proposed pergola overlooking Central Park and the subject of the board's review. The Turin was built in 1909 and designed by Albert Joseph Botker. It is a 12-story residential building in revival style of an Italian Renaissance palazzo. The existing facade materials are limestone and a similar light colored brick. The mass of the building is articulated into five slender volumes seen in the plan and photos. Consistent with Italian classicism, each of these volumes is further articulated with the bottom, middle and top. The tax photos show that the building originally had furnaces at the top, but they have since been removed. It is in the southeast corner of the building where the proposed terrace is located. All existing architectural features of the building will remain unchanged in our proposed design. The photos at the top show the existing roof. Their locations are noted in the plan. The roof has two distinctive elements, existing elements, and elevated, elevated bulkheads with skylights and a water tower. The tower and elevated bulkhead next to it, image three, can be seen from the park. The proposed plan at the bottom shows to the left the approach to the main terrace from an existing stair and passenger elevator flanking either side of the water tower. The deck materials, planters, railings and pod have been approved at staff level. The pergola is sighted at the southeast corner of the roof and is set back five feet from either side of the south and east parapets. So that's the water tower, the stair, the elevator. These are porcelain pavers, wood decking over here. Porcelain pavers, this is artificial grass in here. An existing bulkhead, what we're calling the pod, which is a seating area, and then the pergola and question, five foot setback from the interior of the Central Park facing parapet as well as the south parapet, that's five feet there. The area in red indicates the footprint of the proposed roof terrace. Here we see the existing water tower and elevator bulkheads with the water tower and the adjacent elevated bulkhead dominating the roof scape. This is now the proposed terrace plan. Circled in white is the pergola, the subject of this presentation. The elevations illustrate that the height of the pergola, shown in red, is consistent with most of the bulkheads. Note that if the corners were restored in the future, visibility from the park of these roof elements will be further reduced. Furthermore, none of the proposed design will interfere with supports, supports that may be necessary for the corners' restoration, supports going back. The top elevation looking north shows the water tower with the existing stairs to its left and the passenger elevator to the right. Continuing east, the middle elevation shows several planters and a guardrail serving as a trellis. The bottom elevation is looking west, the pergola is to the left, which is consistent in height with the existence more existing bulkheads. Too fast or too slow?
That's fine.
This sheet shows non-visible or minimally visible elements in our design proposal seen from Central Park West. Adjustable tripods were erected to mimic the heights of the proposed roof structures. Photos of the tripods were taken along 93rd Street and Central Park West. In the top and middle row, the pergola is not visible. In the bottom two, it is minimally visible and can be seen as a white, as a white outline. Maximum visibility of the pergola is seen in the photo on the bottom right, taken from 92nd Street. Orange rectangles illustrate visible contextual structures. These are existing appurtenances on the, on the Turin and on the buildings to its north and south. I'll point them out later on the next one. The views here taken from the park are more than minimally visible. Note that the rectangular outline of the pergola includes its louvers. Its maximum visibility is seen in sightline five in the photograph to the right. Orange rectangles again illustrate contextual appearances. They are a residential penthouse in the building to the south of the Turin over here. An out of scale structure seen in black above the building to the north, I don't think that needs an introduction. And lastly, the Turin boiler vent and water tower seen minimally in the right photo. So that's over here between these two at the entrance. The pergola is an open structure with louvers. The louvers and beams are aluminum and powder coated off white, similar in tone to the facade's existing brick. The louvers provide shade and conceal LED strip lighting, providing a soft, diffused reflected light off of the louvers. The detail on the bottom right shows the originally proposed louver, which was lowered from our original design to further reduce visibility from the park. The angle and spacing of the louvers, while providing shade, also provide less wind load than a flat structure with the same amount of shade. Seen in the notes at the bottom left, sightline I shows minimal visibility from Central Park West and sightline V shows more than minimally visibility, minimal visibility from Central Park. Photographs on the right show a similar pergola design. In the proposed pergola for the Turin, the overall height of the pergola frame has been reduced by a foot and the louvers by five inches since receiving comments from the community board. We have considered rotating the pergola from its north-south axis by 90 degrees. This, however, shifted non-minimal visibility from Central Park to 93rd Street, arguably making it more visible and closer to pedestrian. It would also limit views from the pergola and the purpose of the pergola. The top rendering shows the pergola's maximum visibility from Central Park. From this view, however, the louvers and the overall massing appear the most open. In the bottom rendering, the pergola seen from Central Park West at 92nd Street is minimally visible. Appurtenances that are not original to the historic character of the building were surveyed between 61st Street and 97th Street within the district. Eight types were identified. Water towers with exposed wood planks, a ubiquitous fixture of the city, of course. Guard railings and fence structures such as that 63rd Street. Greenhouses and pergolas, 73rd Street is an example. Mechanical equipment seen at the Natural History Museum. Slumming risers, 97th Street. They are not marked here, but they're up here at the top, this kind of Home Depot shiny typing. Cell phone relay equipment, 83rd Street. And then our last sheet, bulkheads. For example, at 84th Street and other locations, as well as penthouse dwellings, 88th Street is an example. With these examples, I wish not only to say that the pergola's visibility shares company with other appurtenances seen from Central Park West and Central Park, but that it is in character with other more positive park and terrace structures such as pergolas and greenhouses. The rooftop greenhouses at 225 Central Park West and 82nd Street are visible from Central Park West and Central Park. The structures are minimally set back from the building's facade and penthouse. The greenhouses are Victorian in style and are made of metal and glass. The metal is light in color. As with this example, the Victorian greenhouse is typically with some ornamentation, but not without a distinct modern industrial step. This structure can be compared to our pergola with its slender, light metal elements and transparent openings. In addition to this precedent, I would like to, I may, present one more sheet, an appendix of precedents from outside the Central Park West Historic District. I may. On the left, the rooftop penthouse at Fifth Avenue and 97th Street with the Carnegie Hill Historic District is seen from Central Park. It too has a light colored metal structure with transparent openings. It is inconsistent with the neoclassical idiom of the building, but consistent with the period's vocabulary of park structure. To the right of the sheet are images similar in character to the metal pergola we proposed at the Turin. At the top is the ladies' pavilion in Central Park with thin metal columns and a ribbed roof structure. Our proposed pergola also has a similar pavilion-like quality. In the middle is Mitchell Jergel's New York Botanical Garden structure. And there note please the operable louvered roof system and their similar, similarity to the louvers in our design. So for example, here we see them open on top. The bottom shows the Victorian style conservatory in the Brooklyn Botanical Gardens, typical to its period. It exhibits with a classical affinity and elegant industrial aesthetic. I can summarize this presentation with five points. The pergola is a light and open structure with shading louvers on top. The views of the pergola are minimally visible from Central Park West. Viewed from the park, the open pergola structure louvers are more than minimally visible, yet have little perceived mass. This is further evident when we see in relation to surrounding contextual structures. Of the appurtenances we identified, the pergola is among those rooftop types like greenhouses seen at 73rd and 82nd that are consistent in design with existing Central Park and other New York City park structures. In the future, should the first be restored to the Turin, the pergola will be minimally seen and/or invisible to the park. That ends my presentation.
Thank you, any questions? All right, let's move to public testimony, we may have questions after that. Sean Cosambi.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Cosambi for Landmark West. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee reviewed the proposal carefully and had several reactions. Resolvency is that visible proposals that can be viewed from multiple arterial and scenic landmark vantage points. If this intervention were a requirement for the buffer functioning of the landmark such as water towers, a code mandated chimney, a vent stack or mechanical equipments, effort will be made to reduce visibility by seeking alternate locations, limiting the profile or examining alternate mechanical means. This does not affect the circumstances presented. The pergola may be a nice to have asset, but it's not a critical feature to this landmark. The Central Park West skyline is variegated, one of solid and roid sculpted through mass and form. A visible construction of unitized construction that is in all likelihood to be lit at night does not complement this context. This proposal seeks to occupy a fraction of one of the six loads of a roof. Surely there are other options. With an expansive roofscape, our committee would like to see explorations of alternate sightings which reduce visibility before further discussing material appropriateness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's, that's the only sign up we have in advance, and I know Mark Diller signed up today.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Commissioners, nice to see you in person. I am Mark Diller from Community Board Seven, I'm a member of its preservation committee. A procedural note, because we were a little bit surprised by the recall back to in-person meetings, or should I say the venues that host us were surprised by that, we were unable to have a full board meeting. So I'm presenting to you a committee action, which is not an action of the whole board, and I should distinguish that for you before I continue. We at Community Board Seven take what we think is a generous approach to rooftop structures. The previous speaker actually mentioned many of the ones, so I won't repeat. But there are things that are very utilitarian or necessary nature that populate the roofs, and in a certain way, they become part of the poetry of our rooftops on, in this historic district and throughout, throughout our Upper West Side. Certain bulk, bulk is inevitable in that respect. The common thread is that they are utilitarian and that they do not unduly call attention to themselves. And perhaps to engrat upon that, that there is some sort of functionality that is required or at least importance to add to this. Here, we believe this, this, this pergola goes too far and therefore is inappropriate and should be turned down as presently presented. It is visible, it is visible from within a scenic landmark and it is visible from the public way. We differ as to whether that's trivial or not, I think we think that it is not trivial, but it is indisputable that it's visible. We understand that it is lighted, that the louvers themselves are lighted and that, so that not only would it be visible during the day in the broad sunlight, but it would be visible at night as well, and that's kind of unusual for any kind of rooftop structure on Central Park West or indeed any of the things that might be used as precedent for this application. It is composed of modern materials in white. While we very much subscribe to the view that it is better to have modern structures contrast with the historic rather than to try to look like they're fitting in and fail, this goes too far in that direction, especially when you add the lighting to it and so forth. And, and, and context is everything. While they've made great efforts to contain the height, we appreciate that and we appreciate some movement between what we saw at committee and what is presented here today. It is still the case that all those things that moved the committee to jack are still very much part of what you see for you today. The examples that are given to you as precedent actually prove the point. They are utilitarian in comparison to this very showing structure and therefore we urge you to disprove. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, and I'll just note that yeah, the letters we received are from the two speakers, there are no additional letters. Would you like to respond to those comments?
I, yes, the, I understood that there are utilitarian appurtenances along Central Park and viewed from the park. We've pointed out this one instance and several on a building on 73rd Street. And I'm sure there are many more. But these are, these are not utilitarian buildings. These are not air conditioning ducts, these are not water towers, these are not cell phone towers. And yet they are an amenity, I would say, to our city. They are drawing a relationship to the park in the spirit of the park as pavilion as greenhouse. And as such, our building too. And as such, our building too empathizes with that kind of relationship to the park.
Okay, Commissioners, any final questions? Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Bland?
Okay. I find myself in a minority again. You know, this urbanist speaking now finds to be one of the most exciting things about New York City was looking up above the roof, above the cornice, to see what lies on the roof. Sometimes that is a discordant something or other. I think it just mentioned a few cell towers, the most egregious. But I find that that skyscape of interesting things on roofs, particularly when they imply human habitation on a roof of which we'll be much more of in New York City, not less of, I find to be quite interesting. I draw the line for me when the distraction of visibility of something in the roof distracts me enough that it competes with and overwhelms and negates somehow the structure below it, often, let's say, the cornice in particular. So that's this moment. It's a 40-year-long New Yorkers' observation. And I hope it to be one of the dearest and most important of my observations of our great city. So therefore, I come to believe that this is not a terrible distraction in its shape, but in its location, and even its height. But I think its brightness is too bright, and it should be a darker color, not necessarily dark color, but darker. And I think it should not be lit. It should just, other ways of lighting the pathways up there to make it safe. Otherwise, I find it acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree. I think it should not be lit, because that really makes it visible at night. And I think the lightness is fine. I could...
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I'd like to say that Commissioner Bland is in the minority, but I don't think he is. So I find it appropriate as well with his two limitations.
Okay, Commissioner Holfman?
Yeah, I think definitely the lighting of it is not appropriate. And I agree, the darker color would be better. I think they could also look at trying to lower it a little bit. It seems like it is still a little bit high. Otherwise, I think it's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I do think it is appropriate with Fred's modifications. However, I think it's kind of a shame, you know, moving it back to swap it with the pod would reduce its visibility significantly. And, you know, yes, you couldn't both bask in the shade and immediately observe all of Central Park from that particular location. But it seems like a relatively modest modification for a lot of improvement in the visibility. And I think it's to be noted that the always moderate and reasonable Mark Diller is coming out with this committee as opposed to it. I have to take that seriously. But I mean, I think I can find it appropriate with everyone else's modifications. But I think it's a, it would be a much better solution if they just swapped it with the pod and reduced visibility.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I think it should be swapped with the pod. It's too drastic. It calls attention to itself.
Okay, Commissioner Chandler?
Yeah, I agree with the majority of the comment. I just approve Commissioner Gustafson right. That's right. It's not in the minority. I think that, I do definitely agree that the lighting is, may not be appropriate. And, you know, we always respect the hard work from Community Board Seven. But I think in this case, you know, given is the suggestion of the modification, I think it may be appropriate.
Okay, all right. So and I too agree with the majority. I think that we have approved pergolas, visible pergolas, particularly on apartment buildings. And this is lightweight and somewhat transparent. So I think in that context, it would be appropriate. But with the stipulation that it be a darker color and not lit, so I think there may be six of us who would support that. But I would also say, so I'd say we go ahead and make that motion. But I would urge you to consider setting it back further or lowering it a little bit in height as well. But we'll do an approval today for it with the two modifications. Okay.
Okay, in the matter of 333 Central Park West, the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by Alfred Joseph Motkern, built in 1909 to 1910, and the applications to install a rooftop pergola. I recommend approval. Well, first, let's say, I will note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are one of the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical architecture of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. I should note that the building's cornice was removed prior to designation, resulting in a 346-inch unadorned parapet. I recommend approval, noting that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. But the proposed pergola will be only minimally visible over the primary facade from Central Park West. And while more than minimally visible from within the park, it will be seen over a striped parapet, a stripped parapet, and its presence will be in keeping with other rooftop accretions found on apartment buildings along Central Park West. But the proposed pergola will feature an open design with finished metal material, darker than offlight, and will not draw under attention to itself within the roof sole. And the proposed work will not detract from the special historic or architectural character of the building of the historic district. Furthermore, I recommend that the building not have lights, but that the pergola not have lights on it.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? Okay, and Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Holfman?
Aye.
With seven favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so it's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff. And please also continue to explore ways to, other ways to produce the visibility. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number 10, LPC 21-01604. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1501 Lot 4, 1083 Fifth Avenue and the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. Bozart-style townhouse designed by Turner and Killian of 1901 to 02, with significant alterations by Ogden Cogman in 1913 to 15. The application is to enlarge a rooftop bulkhead.
Good afternoon. This project is about a proposed elevator bulkhead on the north facade of 1083 Fifth Avenue. You'll know, you're probably familiar with 1083 Fifth Avenue, was one of three buildings that formed the National Academy of Design campus. All three buildings were separated and sold to individual owners recently.
Five dash... Could you speak more loudly into the microphone? Thank you.
You probably already know that 1083 Fifth Avenue was one of three buildings that formed the National Academy of Design campus. The three buildings were physically separated recently and sold to individual owners. 5-7 East 89th Street is going to be in the museum. 3 East 89th Street is going to be a commercial gallery. And 1083 Fifth Avenue is being converted back to its original use as a single family home. The work we're proposing is part of a comprehensive building renovation under the stewardship of the new owner. The facades, all four facades, including the non-visible ones, are being fully restored. All the windows are being replaced. Advertising on the Fifth Avenue facade is being removed. And the commercial facade, sorry, the commercial entrance installed by National Academy is going to be replaced with the original doors and windows that Cogman had designed. These three photographs show the three views that are currently available on Fifth Avenue. The photograph on the right is just south of the facade. The middle photograph is perpendicular. And the left photograph is the one area where the elevator bulkhead will be partially visible, depending on where you stand on Fifth Avenue. I'd mentioned with regard to the left-hand side of the slide, during National Academy's use of the building, they installed a, what was then required as a code-compliant steel stairs that went all the way to the roof. And extending all the way to the roof, they added a bulkhead which was clad in a white stucco finish, which was very alien to the rest of the building. When 1083 was designed, it was the fourth building, starting at East 89th Street. There were three townhouses south of it that were replaced with the large white parking block, 1085th Avenue. It would have been reasonably assumed when 1083 was designed that there would be more townhouses north of it, and consequently, that north facade was never meant to be seen. The situation changed, of course, when the church was built there, and we ended up with an unadorned facade which was never meant to be looked at. Once the white stucco bulkhead was added, the contrast drew your eye up to that level. One of the things we're proposing here, in addition to extending the elevator bulkhead, is to undo the rung that was done when a very white stucco finish was added on an element that was not meant to be noticed. These drawings show the existing and proposed conditions and the size of the bulkhead. We worked with the elevator engineers to minimize the size of the cab, the steel structure above the elevator, and the elevator bulkhead itself. In particular, to help minimize the height by a couple of feet, we're proposing that the elevator bulkhead be capped with a gravel stop rather than a parapet, which saves us probably about a foot or 18 inches in overall height. You'll see on the left side, the existing white stucco finish over the existing elevator stair bulkhead. And the drawing on the right shows the way we would propose to blend it in and make it more seamless and less noticeable than what is there now. These two slides are three-dimensional views. The one on the left shows everything that's in approved at staff level thus far. This particular application is for the addition of the visible elevator bulkhead only. And in terms of volume, that bulkhead represents barely a quarter percent, a quarter of 1% of the existing volume of the building. Using the same 3D model, we did multiple posts of views to test in advance the degree of visibility of the elevator bulkhead. On the right, the blue area shows the proposed volume of the bulkhead. The image on the left is a photo rendering showing how we believe the bulkhead would tune out by using, and received by using, brickwork that's matching the existing brickwork. These three images show the same 3D model. And we were able to establish that, using the model, that the bulkhead would not be visible perpendicularly in front of the facade or at the south direction, and we have photographs which will confirm that later in the presentation. In terms of the bricks themselves, the building originally had a three-sided light well towards the back of the building. A previous LPC approval at staff level, it was agreed that the light well could be demolished and filled in. When the three sides of the light well were taken down, we salvaged as many bricks as we could. The photograph on the, we salvaged them with a view to using them towards repairs and things like the elevator bulkhead. If you look at the photograph all the way on the left, the lower three rows of bricks are existing bricks that were salvaged. The three rows of bricks at the top, the three and a half rows, those are a new blended brick that we had made for this project. And it includes some pinkish bricks, some terra-potash bricks, and some brownish bricks. The middle photograph shows a 50/50 blend dry-laid to show how the proposed new brick and the existing brick matched each other. And then the larger image on the right shows the way that work was installed up the area where the light well is being filled in lower down the building. Landmarks approved the mix, and we're satisfied with it. And we're proposing to use the same mixture of new and salvaged bricks on the elevator bulkhead and where the patch former stair bulkhead is now. The drawing below shows the physical size of the proposed elevator bulkhead. And again, it shows that we're trying to undo the rung that was done with the stucco by removing that outer coating and replacing it with these blended match of bricks. These are just two more 3D models that we used to test the visibility. There was a slight visibility near the north side, sorry, near the south side of Engineers Gate across the park. But as soon as you go north of that point, the elevator bulkhead is totally lost to view because of the southern turret on the church building. Moving to the next slide, in the top left-hand corner, we have the sightline taken from the opposite side of Fifth Avenue. And you can see that the sightline is sufficiently steep that it's nowhere near the mass of the proposed elevator bulkhead. The colored image on the right, that shows the zone in which the elevator bulkhead is visible. But it emphasized that it's visible in a very intermittent episodic way. North of that cone, you can see that the church would block any view to the elevator bulkhead. And south of that cone, you can, you'd be looking through two, three, and sometimes even four layers of trees without being able to see the bulkhead. But it is intermittently visible in that graphic cone there. And these are slides coming up that sort of show the episodic intermittent visibility. The first photograph all the way on the left, that's taken from immediately across on Fifth Avenue. There's a very, very slight visibility, but only when the trees have lost their foliage. When in the summer and spring, that view would not be there. The second view shows that it's not seen from that area. If you get down towards the south side of Engineers Gate, it appears briefly. If you continue a little further down that area, you'll lose sight of it because of the tree. Moving up on the ramp up towards the running track, the photograph on the right, it's barely visible from one point, only through the current branches. If you move a little further along that area, you'll start to see it. Again, as you can move further down, you'd lose it again. So I'm just emphasizing that it's intermittently visible. And finally, when you get up onto the running track, in the left-hand photograph, it's not, the proposed bulkhead is not visible. The middle one, it's partially visible. The third photograph, we start to see it again, and a few steps further south of that, you would lose it. So it's just that very narrow cone in which it's visible. So it emphasized that what we tried to do was make the elevator bulkhead as small as we could. So it emphasized that what we tried to do was make the elevator bulkhead as small as we could by eliminating parapets. We tried to make it tune out as much by using identical materials for those already in use on the north facade. And we eliminated any detail like coping stones that would draw attention to it as an architectural feature because we don't believe the north facade was ever intended to be seen. And by righting the wrong of removing the stucco, we felt not only were we making our proposed elevator extension minimally visible, but we were also removing something that was drawing your eye in that general direction.
All right, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? All right. Let's see, we do have one person has signed up, Laura from the Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District.
Laura Varelli representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. As a disclaimer, Rhonda West, a West Preservation Associate, sits on Friends Board of Directors. However, she has not participated in any discussion regarding this application. Despite the significant visibility of the bulkhead enlargement, we do not believe it should diminish the building's significance nor to negatively impact the townhouse's historic character. The use of salvage brick to re-clad the existing bulkhead and its enlargement is lovable and will result in a more cohesive look. Friends Preservation Committee recommends approval of this application. Thank.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Mo Vanderlong.
My name, my name is Lo Vanderwold. I'm representing Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We, we unreservedly support this application. We recognize that it will be somewhat visible from Fifth Avenue and points in Central Park. But the main point is that it, it is, it is set very far back, maybe more than fifty feet. It, it, and its cladding is similar to the cladding that will be on the wall and it will not be that visible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? All right. And we also received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board H recommending approval of the application as presented. Okay, are there any final comments you'd like to make? I think your presentation was quite clear. Okay. All right, commissioners, any final questions? All right. So Commissioner Hope Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing? So moved. Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this is a extension of a bulkhead, including raising it for an elevator, but changing the materials to help it blend more in its setback. And it does have the sort of incidental oblique views. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this?
Yeah. Yes. The effort that was, it is visible, but the effort that was put in materially and design-wise to make it almost invisible. It's, it's, it's. Yeah, let me put it, it works for me. I, I, I can.
Okay. Commissioner Augustinson?
Yeah, it's, I agree, it's, it's set back. It's not visible over the primary facade. It's only visible over a secondary facade. It's, they changed the cladding to make, make it less visible and less intrusive. So I, I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Russell Smith?
I think it's appropriate. I think especially a change in the, the cladding to the brick land of the existing makes it, will help make it blend in more.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Devonshire?
Very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chairman?
Agreed.
And Commissioner Bland?
Minimal.
All right. So I think we're all in agreement that this is an appropriate change. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes. In the matter of LPC dash twenty-one oh one six oh four, ten eighty three Fifth Avenue, expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. Application for a large roofed-up bulkhead. I note that the building's style, scale, and material and details are mighty features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of this expanded Carnegie Hall Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed enlargement to the existing roofed-up elevator block set back from the front and rear facades will not be visible over the primary facade of the building. That the expansion of the elevator pocket of this mid-block building will be visible only over the secondary last facade from the Fifth Avenue and at a great distance from select vantage point within Central Park. That the existing bucket is already visible from oblique angles along Fifth Avenue and Central Park. So that the presence of the proposed enlargement will not, will not appreciably change the appearance of the building. That the proposed brick cladding would be the same color, texture, and bond pattern that the existing bucket. And the side facade of the building does allow the addition to blend in with its surroundings. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historical character of the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Augustusson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mo, you're called and made.
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hope Smith.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is item number eleven. LPC twenty-one dash zero five seven two five, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Block fifteen oh three, block fourteen, fifteen East Ninety-first Street and the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. This is a modern-style apartment building designed by Leonard Schultz and Associates, built nineteen forty-six to forty-seven. And the application is to remove a balcony enclosure.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Mary Dirks and I'm the preservation consultant for the project. Um, okay. As mentioned, this building was built in nineteen forty-six to seven in the modern style and designed by Leonard Schultz and Associates. The predecessor firm was Schultz and Weaver and was known for its hotel design, including the Cherry Neverland, the Pier, and Waldorf. The building was built with balconies with streamlined railings. They weren't closed over the years, but there are some remaining. There was, there is a window master plan from nineteen ninety-four. This does not include the balcony window and there is no balcony master plan. The windows are still not uniform on the building. They're mixed of configurations. And the windows on the balconies are not uniform. Most of the balconies are enclosed, but there are open balconies still. And you can see these on the corner, toward the top, there are a couple. And there are also top floor terraces with the same kind of balcony railings. The, the balcony to be restored, you can just see it, it's, it's got kind of a pink box around it on the, on the left, on the one, two, three. It's the fourth floor. You can see the terrace too at the top with the railing, sort of. Here's a, an original terrace on the corner. Actually, more than one original balcony. This is the plan. The balcony to be restored is on the, on the top right. This is the elevation. The railing will match the, the existing railing. And the, the new balcony windows are in the same proportion as what we think are the original. But instead of a big open window in the center, it's double doors in the center. This is the top part of the windows can be seen from the street. Here's the rendering showing the, the restored balcony on one, two, three, fourth floor. And here's another rendering, a little hard to see. People are seeing the value of open space. And this is an opportunity to begin to restore this building to its original design. As you all know, Landmark's policy is to take a long view toward building, bringing a building back to its original design and look. And while LPC has approved balcony enclosures, it also regularly approves restoring an original feature, even if there aren't many left on the building. And that is the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
I have one. Yes. But what's the future intent of this building? To have balconies or have them enclosed? What, what's the plan?
So the, the, the current, this current line of balconies has all had glass enclosures, some of which predate designation and some were approved by this commission finding that it was appropriate because there were some that were already enclosed. And so the proposal is to restore it, which is, you know, unusual to bring a restoration to a public hearing or a vote by you all, but given the commission's past history with enclos- closing the others, we thought you should review this one now to open it up and restore it to its original open terrace condition.
So, so the master plan of the future is.
Yeah, so there is no master plan for the balconies.
There are balconies.
Yeah, there's a master plan for the windows on the building, but not for the terrace enclosures.
Thank you.
So, so there is no master plan. The commission has approved it in one-off instances. And there are some remaining open, unenclosed, original conditions. All right. Other questions? Okay, let's see if we have testimony. Laura Varelli?
Laura Varelli representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. Friends laments the laws of the original open balconies on this classic white brick apartment building. The staccato effect of these balcony openings, most of which have already been compromised, was a classic mid-centering design featured, a classic mid-centering design feature that emphasized the horizontal lines of the building. Thus, we appreciate the applicant's desire to restore it to its historic condition. The recreation of the historic metal railing will reintroduce the streamlined details that have been stripped from this building. We do recognize, however, the break of the uniformity on the west bay, which could be resolved with the establishment of a master plan focusing on the reopening of enclosed balconies. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's the only sign up that we have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, please go ahead, Lo.
My name is Lo Vanderwold. I'm representing Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We take a different view of, of this. We think that since there's a tax photo for nineteen ninety where all of the balconies are on the west, on the west bay are enclosed. And that predates the designation of the, of this building in the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. So, and, and those enclosed balconies, floors three to eight on the western bay, mirror the enclosed balconies on the eastern bay to the eighth floor. And the ninth and the tenth floors are open. And we believe that this could have been a conscious design because the ninth and tenth floors can read as the terrace floors above them. So we think the fact that the balconies for floors nine and ten of the eastern pier were not enclosed, in our view, reflects that the board at the time wanted to stress this, the symmetry between east, the eastern and western piers. And also reflects a sense that open balconies, that these two floors would read as an appropriate transition to the open terraces above. Nevertheless, if these two unconverted balconies for floors nine and ten that we believe are being used as a kind of a wedge in this application because their presence is being used to imply that a mix already exists between the enclosed and unenclosed balconies. Therefore, it's argued that converting an enclosed balcony to unenclosed fits within the existing pattern of, of, of mix of enclosed and unenclosed. And hence, this application should be approved. That's the argument. We argue that that's patently not the case, that what matters is the placement and the location and, and of the unenclosed balconies. And this introduces at the fourth floor an inappropriate feature that breaks the existing harmony pattern between the vertical uniformity and the symmetry on the horizontal, on the eastern piers. So our reasons for opposing this, it will break the uniformity of the enclosed balconies of the western pier. It will break the symmetry of the eastern and western piers with respect to the enclosed balconies for floors three to eight. It will introduce an anomalous void at the fourth floor and call attention to itself. And next to the landlord Trevor Mansion. And finally, it will set a precedent that could encourage other conversions over time. And that would be largely isolated and that would create sort of a landmark presence for many years to come. I think that if there was a master plan with, with, with real teeth, we would change our view on this. We think you're going into an era that is going to be hard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? All right. And I'll just note for the record that Manhattan Community Board H recommended approval of the application as presented. So do you want to address the comments about uniformity?
A little bit. I, I think this is an opportunity for restoration that shouldn't be overlooked. That this building was designed with open balconies. And there is a, a remnant of a new wall in this, on this, in this apartment that shows that that had originally been a, an open space. It would be great if it went back to this and if it takes a little while to do it, well, that, that's how it is. I think people are starting to see the benefit of open space again. And it, it could happen sooner rather than later. Thank you.
All right. And just one question to follow up on Lo's testimony. I know our commission approvals have been with many years in between each. So there was sort of no intent that everything be enclosed up into a certain height. They were one-offs that were done several years in between each. But just to, to talk about the relationship to the other line at the corner. As I recall, this building has windows of slightly different configurations. So some may be three parts, but they're not all identical. Is that the case?
Yes. The window, the windows on the building are, are not uniform. They have various configurations, meaningful alterations. I'm saying with the enclosed balconies, they're not uniform.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, so apart from your, your aspiration towards restoration, do you, do you have any basis for believing that, that there is interest in opening up other?
Commissioner, can you speak into the microphone? Sorry. Any interest in opening balconies that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of them. I think that this one on the fourth floor that is reflected again on the roof terrace. So you get a one, two, three, four, and then you get a one, two, three, four, and then you get the roof terrace again.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other final questions? All right. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? So second. All in favor? I mean, yeah. Say hi. Hi. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Hope Smith?
Well, I, I appreciate that they have a master plan for the windows and I hope that they can adopt a master plan for the terraces. But I think that this is a natural, an improvement. And I'm hoping that it will spark other owners to follow in their footsteps. I think it's appropriate to bring it back to its original configuration and I think that people are looking for more outdoor space. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It's an interesting application because usually.
I agree. It's an interesting application because usually when we add a burden to a building that's having a master plan or multi, you know, multi-unit situation, like, you know, we make them put millions back in their window. Right? They kind of have a gun.
Can you speak into the mic? They kind of had a gun to their heads already because the windows are pale. Right? So, you know, all right, they have to do the grids, but, but at least they're going to get new windows out of the deal. Here, I just find it hard to imagine that New Yorkers are going to give up usable square footage, even, you know, even if we all aspire to greater outdoor connections. But I, I think that, you know, just on the face of it, the, the idea of restoring an original feature has to trump the desire for uniformity of a nonhistoric condition. And I just, I also think it's really interesting just that looking at this building at, as a traditionalist architect, newly confronting modernism and what do they do with it? It's just, it's just an interesting building, the details, how they mix the different styles of the period and it's kind of a real interesting mishmash. So, and I think the balcony details are an example of that. And I think it's great that it's being restored.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Restoring a new condition on our floor and this is well done.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I also agree with all the Commissioners' comment. Also, the, it's interesting to see the summit and joy. And the fact that we live in pandemic times, I think it's only natural.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brand?
I think it's going to be a colder day than in, you know, where before, as, as pictured here. Before anyone else follows the lead of this magnificent co-op owner who wants to return to the original. But nonetheless, I think Michael Bloomberg said it for me too. I think it, it, the desire to return to something that's original should trump the, the idea of continuity of something that was added over time. And I'll note that there's a lot of discordant already in the building, so I don't think this is going to increase that level of discordancy or lack of coherence.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson? Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Wow. New Yorkers do unusual and bizarre things all the time. I don't see why they would be so surprised that they might actually follow this precedent. But when someone sets a precedent for preserving, you know, it, it goes back to my view on windows, forever right or forever wrong. So, all right, we have someone who's willing to do something that's really an improvement and takes us back to a, a higher standard. Well, you know, I'm glad. We're, we're all for it. And the next time someone comes along and wants to follow, you know, we'll be there.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I think that's a great final word. Sums up the support from everybody here. So we make the motion in.
In the matter of LPC 21-05-725, 15 East 91st Street in the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. A modern-style apartment building designed by Leonard Schultz and Associates and built in 1946, 47. The application is to remove the balcony enclosure. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the removal of the modern balcony enclosure will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the overall composition of the building, which features irregular bays of balconies and multiple setbacks, will not be diminished by the removal of the enclosure. That the building originally featured open balconies and the work will help restore the architect's original design intent. That the proposed window and door assembly will closely match the tripartite configuration and details of the master plan windows. That the gray finish will match the previously approved finish for the window replacement of master plan. And that the proposed work is supportive of the special architectural and historic character of the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hope Smith?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, we'll move to the next item.
Okay, we'll now move to item number 12. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1865, lot 1, 1047 Amsterdam Avenue, the Cathedral of Saint John the Divine and the Cathedral Cross Individual Landmark. And it's LPC 21-0953. This is an ecclesiastical complex set in landscape grounds comprising seven religious and institutional buildings, designed in varied styles by Ethel Towne, Hines and Lafarge, Cram, Goodenham Ferguson, Hoyle, Doran and Barry, Cook and Welch, Ralph Adams Cram and C. Grant Lafarge, and built over the course of the 19th and 20th century. The application is to remove the retaining wall, regrade and install fencing and light fixtures. The applicant may begin.
Hi, I'm Kevin Seymour. I'm with NEAN Architects and I'm going to be talking about the Cathedral of Saint John the Divine. I think we probably don't need to go through much of an introduction. I think we already got an introduction.
Can we please speak into the mic and loudly and a little slower? Thanks. Okay, is this better? Sorry about that. All right, I'm Kevin Seymour from NEAN Architects and I'm talking for the Cathedral of Saint John the Divine. So a couple of things to understand about this area that we're going to be talking about. It's a site fence, or sorry, a site wall that's made of stone rubble. That's from the, during construction of the cathedral. And it is in very bad condition right now. It actually has a violation from the building department. We've had our structural engineer, Solomon, has taken a look at this and they do not believe that there's really any way to repair it, partially because this wall was never really designed from the beginning. It is really kind of a pile of stones that we believe were left over from construction. So I'll run through it pretty quick. So this, sorry, this is the Cathedral of Saint John the Divine, the east side. So this is from Morning Side Park. You can see that road along there is Morning Side Drive. And right above that road, there was an area of exposed schist, which the whole area is bolt-on. That's the area in question. So another picture of it during construction before the cathedral school was built. And here is in the site plan, the main entrance to the cathedral is on the left side, along Amsterdam Avenue. And this bearing question is marked in red. It's along the right side, along Morning Side Drive. And the wall is right along the sidewalk. This is, and actually it was for the cathedral school. We can see the cathedral on the back. It shows some site. And walls here, many of those were never built, as with most things up at the cathedral. They're a little like the site was ever planned or kind of built to be sort of designed. A lot of this kind of ad hoc and resulting in, you know, just what was available. So again, this is another historic photo of the area on the left. And if you zoom in here, you can see the cathedral school on the left. You can see it on the right, the ships out popping, which is still there. And the interesting thing is the little chanting, the Great Time. That's the stone masons chanting. You can see a pile of stone right there. And this is before the wall shows up on the right. So this is Morning Side Drive on the south is on the left. And we're starting all the way down to the corner. This is at the left bottom of the photo. This is the apartment building that's on the corner. And then we're going up to the right. You'll see on the right, this is behind the cathedral school. It is currently just a fence. It's a little hard to see this photo, but there's not really stone wall there. There's just concrete posts for, for the fence. This is going further along. You see on the left, there's a gate for the school. Bearing question starts just to the right of the gate. So the middle photo shows the condition of the wall right now. They've actually put up a fence to kind of prevent the wall from blowing out. They put that up a few years ago. And this is further up, where it's like all the way to the right is the enclave. The enclave has a fence that is similar to the things that the cathedral has been installing in other parts surrounding the close. And so that's the one that's going to be, that's more similar to the one that we're proposing. You can see some concepts of the existing. On the left, you can see the rock outcropping. Now on the right, you can see the stone. You see how it's very rough stone. And here's some of the pictures of it up close. So the, the main thing to keep in mind here is because it was never really designed, it's very difficult to fix it in place, which, and we've worked with our structural engineer and had ways to do that. And we've come to the conclusion that the only way to deal with this is really to remove it. This is up at the top of the fence. So the wall is not visible to the left. And up at the top of the hill, there's another fence. And here are some examples of defenses on the cathedral, some of which have been installed recently. The one on the right is probably the most similar to the one that we're proposing. But there are a few key differences that we'll show you. This is the site plan showing the same area as it is existing now. And this is what we're proposing. So we're, we're going to be exposing part of the rock outpopping. The wall is at its tallest right now and we're grading up to the playground that's up at the top. And I wish I had a pointer, but at the, at the bottom, at the lowest point along the sidewalk is where we're proposing a new fence. And up at the top, we're proposing to replace the existing chainings that's there. Back chiming fence, that's a little bit shorter than the, than they have now. And also removes the concertina wire that they have at the top. One thing to point out about the fence is that you'll see to the right of where the fence is, just behind the cathedral, there's a fenced-in area that is used by the cathedral as a splash pool in the summer months. And it's important for them that they're able to close that area off. This is the motivation of what we're proposing. One of the things to note here, that's different from the fence that's around this, we're trying to make sure that the stepping for this fence is making sure that any of the horizontals are aligning as they go along. So the, the, the horizontal piece aligns with the top of the horizontal piece on the lower piece to its left. Also, we want that there are existing floor light fixtures that light up this section of the sidewalk. It's actually quite a dark area and because, you know, Morning Side Park is right across the way, security is a concern in this area. So we're proposing to replace those. There are two sections. One on the left is at the steepest part of what we're proposing. The one in the middle is further to the north. And one right is a, is a detail of the picket fence. These are showing on the right, the picket fence on the sidewalk. At the top of the hill, that's a block two fence.
So at no point are you, are you keeping the stone retaining wall in this section, right?
In this section, no.
Do you have any evidence, concepts, thoughts about the material that was used? It's striking when I saw the photograph that it might be castoffs from the cathedral construction. It looks, it's definitely not the schist.
What is interesting is that it has a lot of stone that doesn't exist at the cathedral. So there's a lot of brownstone, which there's no brownstone in the cathedral itself. There's some marble which doesn't look like it's at the cathedral. We don't really know exactly where it came from. It's possible that that stone mason was doing a lot of jobs in one side here. But it's not something that looks like it's particularly usable. And it's in pretty bad condition too. Thank you. And this is the light fixture that we're proposing to replace. The light fixture on the left, they have these cobradite light fixtures. We're replacing, proposing to replace something that lights up the sidewalk. And here's some of the fore and afters on the left. Obviously, that, there's that fence that's kind of building the Boeing in stone. On the right, the schist will actually be exposed in that corner. Again, some probes who are fairly confident we know where the schist is in, sorry. And on the right, you'll see that, you know, there's the picket fence on the bottom. And it's sitting on a concrete curb. And at the top of the hill is the, the chainement fence where the playground is. And here's another view of what we're proposing. It's only in this area. So to the left, where there's that gate to the cathedral school, that's all staying as it is right now. What are we doing with the park where the wall is right now? And this is towards the top of the hill, at the north end, looking south. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
We're saying that the historic edge of that affair, we're living without a concrete now and historic stonework is all gone.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
He's asking about the historic condition at the wall. And I think you were explaining that it's made up of stones that don't actually match any of the stones in the cathedral complex. And you're now proposing concrete. Is that right?
Yes. So, yeah, so this is what the wall is right now. And as you can see, it's a number of different types of stone. You can see the brownstone at the bottom. In the middle there, there's some marble. There's two different kinds of stone. I'm not sure what those are. There's a number of stones there right now, but what we're proposing is removing all this because it is, it's not possible to fix it at this point. Because it was always never really designed to be retaining wall or to do what it's been doing for the past hundred years.
But you have an opportunity here to make, not make it just concrete. You have an opportunity to have a character to it. Right now, it's just concrete.
So the edge is so important for this cathedral. It just becomes just another edge. So the idea is that we're trying to stick with the fences that the cathedral has been installing around the site for the past several years. And so we're placing the same picket fence that's.
Yeah, and if you want to go to a site plan, maybe you can show where the picket fence already exists around the site.
So you can.
Have a larger.
Yeah, so even here, you can see it all the way to, oh, actually, we can go back. Oops, yeah. So currently, right now, and again, I wish I had a pointer, sorry. Along 113th Street at the top, there is a picket. Oh, thank you. 1113th Street at the top, there's a fence that goes around here. Your stops here that basically goes around the apartment building. It actually goes in here as well. We also have a section going across here, across the main entrance to the South Drive at the cathedral. And then along 110th Street at the top of the retaining wall over here. And then this apartment building uses the same design as well to make it kind of, so this entire super block has one consistent design. So what we're proposing is you're expanding that existing design along here.
Okay, other questions? All right, let's take public testimony and then we'll come back to you. All right. Okay, nobody signed up in advance, but John Graham, I think you're here to speak on this one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. The VSNY welcomes the effort to improve this really landscape of chain link fence, barbed wire, failing stonework and prison yard style light fixtures. Unfortunately, the proposal fails in many respects to accomplish, to accomplish an improvement. We support replacement of deteriorated stone wall with a fence as the existing wall does not advance great craftsmanship or detailing. Though it would be beneficial to understand its age and history. Though it would be beneficial to understand its age and history. The steel picket fence, while too plain, is traditionally designed and harmonious with the character of the east end of the cathedral and with Morningside Park across the street, as is the use of rock outcroppings and boulders on the slope. We suggest, however, salvaging cut stone blocks from the wall and using them as the exposed portion of the fence base or coping to preserve this material and enhance the new fence's harmonious relationship to the cathedral and Morningside Park perimeter wall. If concrete is used, pigmented concrete rather than white concrete would be an improvement. The VSNY strongly objects to the other parts of this proposal. The tall chain link fence proposed at the top of the slope is out of character with the cathedral and its grounds and attracts from them. It also is incongruous with and in close proximity to the more formal picket fence proposed at the sidewalk below. We reserve our strongest objection to the proposed light fixtures and poles attached to the new picket fence at the Morningside Drive sidewalk. Morningside Drive is graced by historic reproduction cast iron lampposts, type M on both sides of the street, a fixture in perfect harmony with the cathedral, the park, and the early 20th century that line the drive. I have brought photographs of the existing light fixtures that are on Morningside Drive. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to pass them around, but if possible. There's also a, as opposed to the Xerox copy photograph, there's one I printed on photo paper. We can actually see the cathedral in relationship to this light pole.
Those are DOT light posts, right?
Yes, it's my understanding they are DOT light posts. To insert the proposed new stark utilitarian poles amongst these historic fixtures would be a travesty. There are options for providing additional light, including working with DOT, add historic poles. Sorry, with or without sidewalk brackets to the west side of this block. The only block on Morningside Drive that doesn't have the poles on the west side of the street. Unobtrusive low level lights could be added at the top of the slope within the cathedral grounds. But regardless of what may or may not be possible in this regard, the proposed lights are inappropriate in design and placement and should not be approved. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. I'd like to second the Victorian Society's position, but particularly because of some, I'm sorry. Is that better? Yes, I would like to second the Victorian Society's position, but also it brought back to me a memory, which I'm sorry to say, I haven't sufficiently documented, the mixed stone blocks in the wall. That's a historic condition which I've seen. And I can't remember exactly where it was along the Hudson and Chelsea. There was a stone quarry. And this is so long ago because since I'm edgy too, I don't want to go backwards with it. And they have made a wall of mixed blocks of stone from different projects. And some of them had engravers on them, they had been from cemetery or something. It's a very interesting effect and it's an old New York thing, which I think should not be wildly discarded for concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. All right, would you like to respond to the comments you've heard?
Yeah, the one comment about the lighting. The thing with the line of the DOT lights, they didn't provide that much light along the sidewalk. And it is, you know, the cathedral is very concerned about from a security point of view, which is why we proposed light fixtures that specifically light up the sidewalk. The rest of the site lighting at the cathedral, a lot of it is kind of a hodgepodge right now. It hasn't ever really been kind of designed. A few of the light installations that we've been involved in along the South Drive, we've used kind of modern fixtures in those locations. So that's probably one of the fixtures that we have here.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right. Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Chen, would you second it?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this is to replace a fence and install new fencing and lighting, to replace a retaining wall and install new fencing and lighting at the, really the backside of the cathedral. You know, I think the renderings, these sort of computer generated renderings, I think, don't do, serve you well because it makes it look like this pristine white city above a black fence. And I think in reality, you'll see a chain length fence like the one above in front of the building. And I think it reads very differently than in your rendering. So that's something to, I think, keep in mind as we discuss this. Commissioner Gustafson, would you start on this?
I do, you'd start with me. I'm largely in favor of this proposal, but I do take some of the thoughts and comments seriously here that we've heard. The, the concrete knee wall could use a little bit of work, which is to say it could be pigmented. It could be that a coping on top of it, some, in some fashion, perhaps, was done something to, to make it look less modern and stark as it, as it does. I think that with regard to lighting, keep in mind that the, the design of the lighting fixture has nothing to do with how much light it's going to throw. There are, the people who do the city lighting, which I can hook you up with, create some incredible lighting, powerful lighting in some fixtures, as in Central Park, that are beautiful. So there are ways to achieve that goal without losing the lighting that you want, or the actual flow of light that you want. And I think those ought to be considered. And perhaps it's time to start thinking about the lighting plan for the entire site, as you point out, which is inconsistent. But generally speaking, the exposing of the schist, and I think that's a wonderful idea. And a small footnote, which is that I understand that you don't know the providence of all of the stone there, and some of it may be complete trash. But I think as it's dismantled, we should, you should keep in mind that if there are, if there is stone there that matches stone that's elsewhere on that site, you know, there will be a moment when you will need that. And rather than putting something that doesn't match into place, you know, you might want to consider taking a close look at things before you get rid of them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Horford, smart.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Gustafson. I think overall, it's a good solution to this problem. Recognizing that that wall was never really designed. It would be nice if they could salvage stone from it and incorporate that into the, into the knee wall. Perhaps that could be a coping along the top, or maybe they could face it stone. I think, I think that the design of the fence itself is fine. And I think also the chain link will oversee that. As Chair Carol pointed out, it's very stark here, but. And I think that they could certainly work on getting better light fixtures.
Okay, Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. I agree with what John said. My, my concern, my biggest concern here is the chain link fence. And if, if the bar fence is what is used to create uniformity, and given that the chain link will be very visible, it is very visible now, much more visible in fact than the lower level fence, which is going to be up against a very closed, dark, over landscaped backdrop. I, I think that the, that the bar fence should be used up high and not the chain link. And I think that in terms of the light fixtures, the, I think that John Graham's on the right direction and that the matching the rest of the campus, since it is a little bit uncoordinated, is less of a priority than matching what's going on on the street. And I think that the streetscape is important to try to preserve and enhance. So if they can match the streetscape lights from across the street, that would be an improvement. In terms of the knee wall, I'm actually okay with the concrete. I think the idea of tinting it or detailing it would be a, would certainly be a benefit. But I think it's so low down and, and minimal in its effect that I don't particularly think that it's a major concern for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire.
I agree with Michael's comments and John's comments about the right fixtures. I also am in agreement that the knee wall is fine as a contemporary imposition. The stone wall at this location has beyond annoyed me ever since I came to New York. It is built so cleverly and corruptly with small pieces of brownstone, cemented by large pieces of limestone. It just makes me crazy. It's built completely backwards, upside down. And I'm so happy to see it go. Most of it is inrod limestone, which is next to compost as a building material. The, the, there is ossining limestone that's only slightly better. It's just, it's the worst wall that I've ever seen in the actual. I'm so happy to see it go. And I agree with Michael also about the fence. I think the upper fence should not be changing. And I can't let this go without saying that it's nice to see a firm that knows their schist.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I share some of the comments and the concerns about the lighting. I think this is an opportunity to look at the whole integrated, the whole compound, to look at a solution rather than piecemeal. And I agree with Commissioner Gustafson's observations as well. I think it would be, it would be a renaissance because this is such an important, you know, structure. It's such an immense, I think it's still the largest volume cathedral. And so, you know, this is really the ring around it, how you do the setting. And I think that where there's the fencing, where there's the base stone, the rock formation, I think, you know, really pay additional detail and attention to see how you can integrate. I think the lighting, you can do soft lighting all around it and still have this any effect, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brand.
Well, not only do they know their schist, but they know their concrete. And I also think that the concrete knee walls can be of a contemporary nature and still be done nicely. I understood the sidewalk to be tinted. And if, and if I didn't understand it correctly, it must be tinted in the blue stone way that it's done in historic districts all over the city now. So I just wanted to clarify that. I can accept the chain link fence only because it is so typical now in parks and recreation all across the city. I think that the public is used to seeing it and almost expecting it. And I don't know how you're going to get a fence that high that is a rod on. But I also reserve my last statement for the, for the lighting. Wellington just said it. I think this is the moment to use the, to reject this lighting and to, and to use this moment to select the right lighting for the whole closed complex. And I don't know if that means lighting and coming back with something, because probably we ought to see it, but a master plan. But I just cannot accept those, those fixtures. Brooklyn Heights is undergoing, it's a slow process with DOT, but half of our neighborhood now has had replacements of cobre, cobreheads with, with what? Now, the one is in front of my house, I think I should know. But in any event, the lighting is very bright. It's just in a different style fixture that's appropriate. And there are many that one could choose from. So I don't know if this needs to be a long and drawn out process, but I think these are not the way to go, even though there may be other and many other types. I think we should, we should see a master plan very, very soon on the light fixtures.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree that that wall on the left is badly constructed. I agree that it's shoddy, but there is a character to that left side that I don't see in the right side. And the right side is character absolute million times in the city. The whole idea of just kind of historic cathedral building is to get the character of that place. And I think that's lost in this scheme. And, but, you know, it's modern, it's well thought through, but that particular feeling in place is no longer there.
Okay, and do you have any feelings about the lighting as well?
The lighting should be rethought.
Okay.
In many ways, doing safety lighting and atmospheric lighting, that's beautiful enough, yeah.
Okay. All right, and so I think that, you know, as Commissioner Gordon suggested, one could look to the street to find a light fixture that's harmonious with the street lights. And if you're comfortable with that direction, that could be something we could task the staff to look at with them. Is that? I think that they, I think that there were pictures that were passed out of the streetlights. The bishops, so we can do something that's harmonious to that.
That be used.
Well, I, I think, and I think that, you know, I think we'd have to look at it because they may not want it to project as far. So it might be a more stand up straight design that has more of a relationship to the bishop's crook in terms of its detailing. And then, you know, I don't know if they are prepared to do a master plan. We can only urge that, but I can't compel that. So if people are comfortable with that, okay. So I think we, I think the only sort of outstanding item, and I think we still have six votes for it, is the chain link fence. But I do think there were a couple of people who felt strongly about the doing that as a picket. So I wonder if people would be comfortable doing an approval with modifications, that they work with the staff to develop a, design a light fixture that's more harmonious with the street lights on Morningside. And that they continue to look at the detailing of the knee wall under the fence and that they explore more traditional fence designs for the location of the fence, at the chain link fence. Does that sound okay? Okay. So that I know you were saying it might be difficult to do the pickets, and maybe they can do something that is a simpler version of. Okay. I mean, I do think we probably have six for the chain link fence, but I think it's worth exploring. Maybe putting exploring. Yeah, that would be that. Okay. Does that make sense to you? Okay, yes.
I don't know, I don't know how to read Sarah's looks. In the matter of LPC 21-09853, 1047 Amsterdam Avenue, Cathedral of St. John the Divine and the cathedral close, an individual landmark. The applications to remove a retaining wall, regrade and install fencing and light fixtures, boy, it sounds so simple. I recommend approval with modifications, noting that the Morningside Drive boundary walls are severely deteriorated and in danger of collapse. That the masonry walls of the Morningside Drive boundary were constructed in the 1920s out of the excess buried stone from the cathedral construction site and not engineered as retaining walls and are not part of the original design. And therefore, their removal will not eliminate significant historic fabric. That removing the excess infill to expose the existing schist with plantings at a one-to-one slope will enhance the landscaping on the site. That the removal of the barbed wire and the replacement of the existing eight foot tall chain link fencing at the cathedral level with, with black finished six foot tall chain link fencing, with a note to follow, will improve the fencing at the playground and allow it to receive from view. That the proposed steel railing set on a beveled concrete base will match the existing rail. will match the existing railings installed at the perimeter of the landmark site prior to designation and will be consistent with other fencing at the campus. But the staggered installation of the eight-foot-tall steel fencing will accommodate the changing grade of the sidewalk and align horizontal members of the simple fence design. That this stretch of Morningside Drive is underlit by city streetlights and placement of the existing nonhistoric light poles is warranted and that the proposed work will not detract from the special character of the individual landmark or the surrounding site. However, we request that the applicant work with staff on the, on the lighting in order to make it more harmonious with the streetlights in the area. And that they work on, with staff again, on the detailing of the knee wall, including possibly the tint of the concrete. And that they also explore alternative fence designs to the six-foot-tall chain link that's been proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion? I second it. Mark? He had talked about them working with the staff on the detailing.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Brand.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
So please continue to work with the staff on these remaining issues. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Okay, we're now going to move to the next and the final item of the day. Item 13, LPC 21-09366, An application for a certificate of appropriateness in borough of Manhattan, block 1633, lot 61, 120 East 106th Street, the Church of St. Cecilia Individual Landmark. It's a Roman esque revival-style church building designed by Napoleon and Green and Sons and built in 1883 to 87, and the application is to install a barrier-free access lift.
Okay, please go ahead and just start by stating your name for the record. And just because we have audio issues with the air conditioner and the masks, if you could just speak directly into the microphone, it would be helpful.
Hello, I'm Mitchell Kurtz. I'm an architect and I'm here on behalf of the Church of St. Cecilia and the parishioners to present a vertical church lift, which hopefully will give your afternoon a lift. We shall see. This is an overview picture of the building. That is a north facing, so we're looking south at the building. It's really beautiful power bricks. The lift is of a type that the commission's portfolio with the photo on the left is from the Puck Building down on Houston Street. And it is the brain then in style and actually tight that we're using this night. There's an inclined lift that goes on the stair and the drive mechanism, which is usually on the top of the deck, as shown on the right on the generic photo, is actually concealed in a board space below, both in the Puck Building and the situation. This is an existing condition photograph of the building on a nice and well. This is the condition. On the left side. There's a piece of fencing which needs to be removed, a lot of flat surface to access the inclined wheelchair. And then the lift is supported on what the manufacturer's called towers, inclined posts. And it's all pretty transparent stuff, trying to make a visual. This is a close-up view of the same render. This is showing lifting its parked position. And at the top, that there's, there's a landing. The actual color, I can't give you anything, but is this black olive color? It's just a little bit warmer. It looks nice. The this is a, a, the lifting its up position. The lift's construction itself is really applied from one rail around the top, so it's pretty transparent. This is an overall plan, above the steep protocol. And the left in this plane and its lower landing position, close up of the same, it's going all over the sidewalk as it rises and ends up at the top. The landing at the top is shown gray. It's an extension of the existing stone threshold, which was not. And that's in order to never let sure of land somebody discharge and still have some space where you don't get hit by the doors. So this effort is an automation effort, is an auto operator on the door. Doing the magic of just programming, the lift arrives, the doors open, the lift ramp goes down. The doors have sensors on it, so we can't close on anybody, no matter how slow they progress. And then the sensor's saying, play inside, and here we go. The oogus of the church was analyzed so that the alleviation of one of the three doors, four doors, was demonstrable to restore clarity when it was to be named in the chapel in the church. Yeah, I need to ask my question. So the
Could you just stand the landing a little bit more?
Sure. So, so the two circles there are the downward and return cable drive for the lift. And you can see it just barely clears the doors. We actually did probes to make sure we cleared the door, cleared the floor underneath from the boiler, cleared the foundation wall. And it just kind of, this sweet spot just happens to work. When you come out further and we study that, and if you'd like, we'll take the time to show it to you. It creates a really massive shell. And its principal problem is it makes the post too high and the manufacturer won't support the post that high. And it contributes a, a section on the ALS in the 1801, which doesn't allow the lift to be any higher than 24 inches above the nearest stair at the top of the landing. So for those reasons, visual ugliness, the impracticality of providing it from the manufacturer or any manufacturer, and the contributing of a reference standard, it kills that idea. So, yeah, we studied it, and obviously would be the preference. So there it is. So the landing is, it's basically steel painted with anti-slip coating, further painted with this beautiful black olive color. And it's raised, so the inch, the existing worst threshold is an inch high. So in order to create the accessibility, that's shinned out the middle of the subway. It just creates a very smooth rise to get to the inside. The photo at the top shows the outline in black of the lift, so I wish to be informed of all of the fixings of the landing, the internal, so the steel channel structure is built in. That's the most invasive thing we're doing is already through bolts to stabilize it. All this goes, kind of, at the top, and it's just a kind of little per type of addition there. The fence that's removed will be stored. Part of the project, I don't think we're looking at it as a, as a replacement of the sidewalk. It involves restructuring the cementing engineer as it, that steel somewhat deteriorated from water penetration, so largely water dripping down, blue sourcing the steel by breaking the spanned way and putting fittings and columns there. And thank you God for allowing it to be within 200 feet of a subway, so we get to go to the NTA to talk about it as well. These are some existing conditions photos that really represents our presentation. And I think this is the favorite scheme of other schemes that have been looked at. I'll briefly summarize them. First was an elevator scheme by an engineering company that did 2020 that was highly disruptive in matter. It was related with the uptight towers that stuck out six feet on the sidewalk. I'm sure they had their reasons, but there would be many reasons, and I think that project failed for cost reasons, there were that reasons and a lot of others. In 1998, there was another scheme, this church, it's kind of an H-shape in plan. But there's two side alleys, and there was a scheme of ramps, two 70-foot ramps. One of them from the grade down, the other one from the grade up. And other than the fact that it cut off the exits from the place of assembly space in the basement, and it was lower than the tops of the doors, it was a good scheme, which is to say it wasn't a good scheme. So having looked at ramps by others and elevator, the extended lift, which you sort of just talked about, this is kind of a sweet spot. We think it has minimal visual impact. It has very little invasiveness to the structure itself. What we're doing is reversible. Should there be some going, where somebody else comes up with the need in the future? And it happens in all the things, and also has the charm of being the most cost-effective. So that's our presentation. We have all the dependencies to show the alternate schemes and existing photographs, if you'd like. And, sorry, and I promise to read a piece from the church who wrote an endorsement letter as did CB 11. And they say that proposed work will have minimal impact on the appearance of the building's exterior, while having a profound impact on the building's use and function for the many people in this town who frequent the church throughout the year. Lift will allow those in wheelchairs to access the building with ease and send a positive message of inclusivity to the greater community where it is seen in use.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll go to puppet testimony later after that. Samyankov?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Samyankov, the State District Council. HCC supports the need to create barrier-free accessibility to historic buildings. It empathizes with the design and mechanical difficulties this can entail. Russell thanked the applicant for showing a number of different alternatives. There were certain reasons why this particular strategy was chosen, as was presented. However, with regard to the effects on this handsome historic building, the alternative proposed is by far re-found to be the most intrusive. If at all possible, HCC recommends the second alternative scheme to the elevator to be pursued instead. I understand from the presentation that it actually stuck out six feet, which was not all an impression at all when looking at the, of the plans. So that being as it may.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, John Graham?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society in New York finds that the proposal is a reasonable way to provide access that is relatively unobtrusive, especially given that it will affect only one of the three sets of stairs and entrances. The work will cause some damage to what appears to be the original brownstone stair, but that would be repairable in the future, though with some difficulty. We do urge that the approval be contingent upon preservation of the historic cast iron fence sections, sections which are proposed to be removed and then as needed, and reinstall them at the site as part of this project. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Okay, and we did not concede a resolution from Manhattan Community Board 11, but I think you did mention that you went and they were supportive. Is that what you said?
Yes, the letter was sent to James at some point.
Okay.
It's, if it's not on the file, like, we can get it to you. But yes, we had a unanimous vote on the Landmarks Committee and the Equatorial Board.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, would you like to respond to the comments we've heard about the size of the elevator and the potential?
Yes, so the elevator was in the uptight tower on the east side. And it's not my design, but there was a, in order to control entry to it, there was a carbuncle that stuck out over the sidewalk, some four, five, six feet. I forget the exact dimension. The problem with the riser was it was a lula, and it diminished the stair width to a point that it no longer carries the capacity to accept hefty discharge from the place of assembly space below. So we actually, though it was well beyond our brief, the church, looked at that just as consideration and thought, well, maybe we could redirect the other exits from the assembly space to two other exits that are there. But the capacity and the separation distance between the exit access doors was insufficient. So you can't diminish the stairs, the lula can't be there, and it's just, you're stuck. So I think it's an infeasible scheme.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, Commissioner Brand, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So.
Commissioner Jefferson, would you second?
I should second.
I, the opposed? Okay, so the hearing's closed, and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this?
All right. Well, there's no question that this is a visible, permanently affixed modification to the way the front, this principal facade of the churches is seen and experienced. And I guess there's two ways to approach it. I think the textbook way is to say, well, you know, is it the least you could do? Yes, evidently, based on the analysis, it's the least of the negative possibilities. So from that point of view alone, I think it's appropriate. But, you know, I don't know, I just saw this documentary about the history of the ADA and all. So it's kind of in my head, and maybe it's biasing me, so to speak. But I think that there's something kind of neat about seeing what we're doing to try to make spaces like this accessible. And I think that that's a beautiful and wonderful thing that you don't see in other parts of the world and that we should be kind of proud of. And I think that as long as it's trying to be consistent and subtle, and it doesn't, you know, unduly damage historical material, I think it's, it's got to be appropriate because it's, it's, it's a thing we should be proud of as, as a country.
Agree completely. Commissioner Devonshire?
I concur with that, Steve. Yeah, given yesterday was the 30th anniversary of the passage of the ADA law, I totally agree with the two Michaels. I think that I have to commend the applicant for a very, very well-cleared presentation. I always remember about Issa Perlman talking about his experience being, having to hold him through a side door and while trying to perform at the Congress. And he said, what a humiliating experience that is. And here, there's a solution, a practical one, to let you go straight into the main entry without having to go through the 70-foot ramps. So I think it is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Brand?
Thank Michael Goldblum for reminding us of our country's almost unique position in this, in this regard. And I think that's marvelous.
And I think, I think that's marvelous. I, I also think that, um, we are now accustomed to seeing and, um, if not regaling, and it's certainly accepting that this is a necessary thing to do. And when you've got ten or eleven or twelve risers, whatever you've got here, there's, it's certainly one of your trials, ramps, et cetera, when they can be neatly, you know, with two or three steps arranged with the architecture, that's preferable, but you can't do anything like that here. Um, so I think what's being asked for here is the right solution. And again, I think, um, the great public who might fifteen years ago or ten years ago might be offended by this intrusion, no longer is. And I think this is, uh, as Michael Goldblum has said, this is something we should be proud of.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's well thoughtful and I think it works. I can, I can approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. It's appropriate. Okay, thank you. So we're unanimous in support of this application and in support of always making our landmarks accessible. So thank you, thank you for a thoughtful presentation. Commissioner Goldblum? Please go ahead.
Regarding one twenty east one oh sixth street, the Church of Saint Cecilia Individual Landmark, the applications to install a barrier free lift, I note that, well, I don't note anything, uh, in, in preference to, to my recommendation that it be approved. Finding that the proposed work will provide barrier free access to the main building entrance in the least intrusive manner possible if the installation is reversible and natural and not disturb the architectural features of the building's base. But the portion of fencing to be removed will be stored on site and available for installation should the lift be removed in the future. The lift will be stored at the bottom of the steps running is in the resting position and the mechanism will be located below grade and fault. Thus minimizing the intrusion on the site that the lift will be simple and designed in painted black to match other ironwork on the building and will not fall into attention to itself with the chairlift and rail installation. Will clear the swing of historic doors and the extension of the top step will be clad with steel with a painted black finish to harmonize with the ironwork of the building. And the work will not detract from the significant architectural features of this individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that?
I second it.
Thank you. Mark?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith, Holford Smith.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion pass.
That's approved, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
And thank you all for another great day and thank you to our members of the public who are respecting the social distancing and still participating. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, may I ask a question of the table? Does anyone at this table know of any building of this stature where the original architect actually took into consideration alternately aboned users? But where we, where we got arrogant that long ago, but no one ever even thought of someone coming in in a wheelchair or wimping even.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a thesis project.